We, first of all, we wanted to talk a little bit and get some advice, some guidance from the board on grants. So we're looking at two sources of grants. Garfield County Federal Mineral Lease District, which you were all aware of, and then Energy Impact Assistance Fund, which we've, I think we've gotten a couple of grants from them in the past as well. Both of them, we think, are good candidates to get some funding for the water treatment plant. And there's no restrictions on, I mean, we can, we can, we could, we could get grants from both of them. And we think there's probably a pretty good chance we could get, we will get something from both of them. Trey and I's conversation was really about, do we go af- our initial plan was to go after Grand Avenue road improvements. Well, water wastewater, probably irrigation lines in there too, to get some money to work on Grand Avenue. And then for the EIAF, to get some additional funding for the boring project that we have money in the budget for this year. But after, you know, the last couple of months of conversations with you all, we thought maybe we go after water treatment plant money for both, from both of those sources. One thing we don't want to do, though, is to apply for money for water treatment plant. And then at some point in 2023, we decide not to do a plant. Because then whatever money we would have been granted, we will just lose. So I know it's maybe a longer conversation than we have today, but we actually don't have time on the, when's the, when's the FMLD?
The FMLD, I need the approval of the reso tonight in the meeting.
The other one-
With FMLD grant, the EIAF-
Is still in-
Is in February, March, due in April.
Right.
So.
Well, what's the, so regarding that little issue, would the money, would the grant money be only if we were doing a full replacement of the water treatment plant? So let's say, for example, we applied for both grants and we got both grants. Whatever outcome happens, and we decide that we're not doing a full water treatment plant, but let's say we're investing still a pretty large chunk into some other option, is that still a possibility? I guess I'm trying to find out like what the scope of work would need to be on the water treatment-
I think with FMLD, correct me if I'm wrong, if we put in there, and I think we have in that, in that resolution, it's like 27 million, $900,000. I think if FMLD gave us a grant toward that-
Okay.
And then we scaled it back considerably, which we hope we can do anyway.
Right.
We can go back to them and say, you know, it's only 15 million now, or whatever the number is, and they would probably not scale the loan back.
Got it, okay.
But there's no guarantees here, they might. And I don't know, do you, do you have a feel about EIAF?
FMLD allowed us to do that on Seventh Street.
They did, okay.
We put in a grant for Seventh Street because we was on to try to replace the water and the irrigation at the same time.
Right.
We only got a third of what we asked for, give or take. I wrote them back a letter, say, "We're still doing the project, we're just scaling it back, this is what we're gonna do," and they said, "That's fine."
Okay, alright.
And gave us the same amount of money. And also in the way I write these grants, instead of saying, "New water plant."
Water plant up-
Water plant upgrades, facility upgrades, or something of that nature, and then it kind of covers all aspects.
Okay.
Upgrade of the water, the potable water treatment system. That leaves a lot of room.
So, you know, I, I can word things a little different and-
Okay.
Have a fairly broad scope where I can.
And our Dola rep, who kind of gives us some guidance on these, is, is pretty bullish on this project and trying to help us out with it. Dana.
Dana, yeah.
So, you know, he understands the need and he wants us to succeed on this, so. And that's the EIAF.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have to do them both for the water treatment plant?
Nope.
Can we do FMLD towards the water treatment plant and the EIAF towards the boring project?
Yeah, they're not tied in any way together.
Any way to each other?
I'm just looking at all the options for lowering the town's outlay for a water treatment plant.
Right.
What do we, what's the boring project gonna cost now? Let's maybe quick-
The boring project looks like it's gonna run about 1.6 million to do.
And we've got grants for 200?
We've got a grant for 200,000 from FMLD towards that project.
Well, didn't we budget for that project, though?
Yeah, yes.
How much did we budget for that project?
1.6 million.
Oh yeah, so we did budget the whole amount, okay.
But any grants we get, it's just that much less money we gotta spend out of that fund.
Sure. So what's the, you know, there would probably be some communication on our part that would need to be done regarding that if we do that project. Only because if you remember, a lot of the feedback that we got from the folks that were here is, they kind of got the sense that we should stop doing some of these other items and just focus everything solely on that water treatment plant. You know, so I think that it would just be wise for us, as we have conversations out and about, as to why it's important that we still tackle these larger projects that we've had on the horizon anyway, that we've budgeted for, in addition to trying to figure out how to take care of the water treatment plant, so.
A lot of those things are things we can achieve now versus a multi-year project. If we put everything on hold for however long it is to the water treatment, then we get that done, then we have all this stuff that we haven't been paying for that we have to do too. So it's, it's important.
Yeah, my thoughts are, you know, the line under the interstate was put in in 1970. So, you know, that's how old then, on Grand Avenue, we have a four-inch water line that's concrete as best as pipe that was put in in 1960.
And the one that's going under, like the overpass, is that that ductile iron?
That one's ductile iron, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, I mean, everything, I feel everything needs to be done, so I'm leaning toward, you know, replacing some of these pipes, like under the interstate and Grand Avenue.
Totally, alright.
And that, that boring project, and Trey can talk about it more, and you guys understand that, is that, that needs to be done. I mean, if we have a brand-new water plant, and that brand-new water plant pushes water through that pipe, we're still gonna have the discoloration and the-
And there's a belly in that pipe that-
Taste and all that stuff.
When some type of water hammer happens, or something of that nature-
That breaks?
It, it stirs up that belly and puts a lot of color into the system.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, a lot of the, on the water mains, you have, you know, the service saddle, you know, it clamps on the water mains where the service line is, and, you know, those, they're so old. Those are the weakest link of the distribution system. You know, like, like the one a month ago, or whenever up Seventh Street, that's what failed.
The day after Christmas, that's what failed.
Yeah, a whole bunch on Grand Avenue, so, you know, replacing those pipes gets rid of a lot of those because, you know, the pipe might be okay, but the weakest link out there are those service saddles.
And another thing with Grand, we have three pipes running down Grand. That just, they just replaced instead of abandoned. They just laid new pipe and left the others in service, so we'll get it all transferred to one pipe.
Of different sizes, right?
Yeah, there's a four, and eight, and a 12.
With, on all being used, though?
Yes, they're all still in service.
That's goofy. Hold down.
Yeah, so we'll eliminate all of them and go down to one pipe.
Okay.
How, how much would we do, so we don't set expectations that we can't deliver on?
The Grand project, we budgeted enough to get from basically, what is that, Pickett that comes out of the back of Lyons?
Yeah.
Yeah, Pickett to probably 16th would get done in this phase.
So it's not the whole length?
Of the project, so it's not all of Grand, it's gonna have to be phased.
That's not even half of Grand.
No.
No, it's two blocks.
Two blocks.
Yeah.
And what's the cost on that one?
400,000.
Oh, oh, I thought that was the 1.6.
No, the one-
That's coming from the interstate.
Okay.
The 1.6 is going under the railroad and interstate.
Yeah, I got you, okay.
Boring.
And this includes road, you know, redoing the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll redo the road once we get the new pipe in, but it'll be water sewer and irrigation. And it's also being designed, Derek's looking at it, the south side of Grand for sidewalk curb and gutter. But we gotta figure out the waste, the stormwater drainage, to make sure we don't screw nothing up there.
Okay.
I might be the negative person looking at this, but if we apply for a million FMLD and we only get 400,000, and we have a chance at 750,000 from EIAF, and if we get all that for the water treatment plant, what is, I mean, that's gonna save the citizens 12 cents on their bill?
Yeah.
So we might as well put it towards other, other projects, in my mind.
Guess hard to argue with that point, for sure, so.
Well, given that we still don't know if we're gonna, how, if we're gonna do the water plant, we should just apply for all the money that's available and figure out how to debet up later.
Yes.
That's my logic.
Also, just to make a point, that if we're not having to finance an additional million dollars, it saves the town quite a bit of money in interest rates.
Yeah. I guess we just have to figure out where that happy balance is between, you know, putting the money here and putting the money there, I guess. Once we get it, if we get it, so.
Except for grants, it's gonna be tied to a project, so we can't say it's gonna be for boring, get it, and then move it to the-
Right.
Water treatment plant.
We can ask for the water treatment plant and then use it for other stuff instead.
Yeah.
It's all water.
Well, yeah, it's-
We need a bigger, we need a bigger bucket to put it all in, no pun intended.
I mean.
Hey, Amy, are you still?
Yes?
The, the 1.6 million we have budgeted for the boring, if we got like the EIAF grant for 750 and put it towards that, that would be 750,000 out of that budget item that could just drop back into the fund, correctly, correct?
Yes.
To answer your question, so that one, you know, we've already budgeted the whole thing out of the water budget. If we got that grant, that just means we would take the grant money and replace 750,000-
Right.
In that line item that would stay in the budget.
And then we could just use that towards the water treatment plant, so.
We'll just go in the water wastewater fund, and then from there, it goes where it goes.
Is that correct, Amy? Does that sound right, or did I screw it up?
The funds have been appropriated, as long as we don't go over what was budgeted, we can essentially use it, or whatever project we don't, we want to use it for.
So if we get the grants, we're just freeing up this money to use however we want in that-
From water wastewater.
So we can still put the, the 1.2 towards the water treatment plant. It's just gonna be out of the fund instead of-
Are, are you mixing general fund monies with, no?
No, okay.
These are in the water wastewater.
Within the water wastewater.
Yeah, water wastewater.
Alright, good.
So I think with that clarification, then-
Go for both?
We apply for both for the two-
Big projects that aren't the water wastewater, the water plant.
Yeah, so FMLD for Grand Avenue and EIAF for the boring project.
Yeah.
Does that sound good to staff?
Yep.
Now, is there any of possibly doing more of Grand Avenue, and at least having the project be bigger, so we can, when we apply for the grant, and then go from there, or?
I will have to get with Derek and we, Derek and I was trying to phase the project in, so we were right around the 400, 500,000 cost. Because that was more, that's what we'd been doing in the past, and being able to budget for and get grant money for. So that's why we were still trying to break it up in that kind of price range. So yes, we could probably, because he's, actually, they're working on trying to design it all the way from Pickett to Seventh Street.
Okay.
But we're trying to break it up, they're, you know, they're trying to get this section done, so it can go out to bid that way. But we're looking at coming at least all the way to Seventh, and then move across Seventh and go all the way to First Street. So in your, on your agenda, number three, you can cross off on the consent agenda. That's the one tied to the water plant.
The water plant?
Oh.
Gotcha.
Resolution number seven?
Yeah, they're both resolution number seven, we just didn't know which resolution.
Didn't know which one we were gonna go for.
Oh, I see, okay.
Okay.
So with that, are we ready to go to resolution number four?
Yeah, I think we are.
Yep. So that's the next thing on the agenda for the work session. There was some concern, I think, among board members that this somehow obligated us to spend 28 million dollars for a water treatment plant, and that's not the case. All this does is allow you to reimburse the town for expenses from the, the loan proceeds. So, and 60 days is the one, that's what I'm concerned about. Because if we put this off, then there's, there are expenses 60 days in our rearview mirror right now that won't be eligible for us to put those in the loan proceeds, or pay for them with the loan proceeds, if we want to do that. I mean, we, obviously, we're gonna have some, we'd have some conversations probably about that, but it puts us in a position to be able to do that. And I don't think anybody, and if we decide not to do a water treatment plant and we don't get any loan at all, it doesn't, doesn't obligate us for anything.
Right, and then the, the 60-day retroactive calendar, is that effective? You know, basically, the, the day that the loan is funded?
Good question, we think it's, it would be tonight.
From when we pass the resolution?
When we pass the resolution.
So, so we passed the resolution tonight, we can go retroactive 60 days from today, even if the loan doesn't, you know, get approved and funded for another 90 days?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
Which is important if you want to pay Duberry.
And, you know, I think I brought up that concern about that resolution, and I think it was more along the lines of just, like, making sure that we were clear about, you know, the timing and why we were applying for that loan, you know? So I think that maybe a lot of folks that don't pay attention to every single meeting that we have, you know, it would just come out that, "Oh, the town of Silt just applied for a 28 million dollar loan," and then like all mayhem breaks loose, and we're on like this quality control thing of trying to let people understand. So if we're clear about that part, I think, then it's all good, so. Unless anybody else hasn't even added that.
No.
That's, I think, yeah.
Okay, so you'll see that in the agenda tonight, then, also.
Yeah, okay.
In fact, we may even have that-
It's on the consent agenda, number five.
Agenda number five, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Can we jump back to resolution number seven real quick?
Sure.
Since that project is 400,000, we're only gonna apply for a grant of 280,000?
It's a 70/30 match.
30, okay, so that's why, okay.
And that's why I was asking, you know, it would make sense almost if we could sneak a couple more blocks in there, and, I mean, the grant possibly is that much more, it makes sense to try to get as much of it as possible.
Yeah, well, and I can tell you from the discussions we had with FMLD, there not a whole lot of money in that pot anymore, especially this year, I think. What'd they tell you, like one, one and a half million to-
Is the max, it's a million to a million and a half per-
Grant cycle.
Cycle.
Which-
One in the spring and one in the fall, and that includes all their mini-grants.
Right.
Yeah, so, and you should see one in there for a mini-grant to outfit some new police cars, too. So.
Okay, alright.
Can I add one more thing about resolution number seven?
Yes.
So, do you want to leave money on the table to where we could possibly get a hu- a million dollars from Garfield County Federal Mineral Lease District to go towards water plant improvements instead of just the 280,000 for Grand Avenue that we already have 100% budgeted in the, in the budget?
Well, and that's another-
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's a good point, yeah.
But didn't FMLD tell us that we could apply for a million, but there's a good chance we was not going to get it?
Well, there's only a million and a half in the whole cycle, there's, they're not gonna-
Right, but the, I think the chances of us getting more money would be going for the water plant grant instead of the Grand Avenue grant.
I think you're right.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, at that point, I was, I was thinking we could, we're gonna apply for the full 400. At that point, we're only getting 280 instead of potentially a million.
Yeah, 'cause it's only a 70/30, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Just a, just a thought.
Good thought, it's a good thought. We could reconsider that.
Yeah. And even if we get told no completely, it's, we're out 280,000. I don't know.
I don't think they're gonna say no.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna say no completely.
I don't think we're gonna shut out, I think, I think they're gonna do what they feel like they can do to help us.
And then, like, where did the likelihood of getting 400,000 come from? Was it just like your estimation that, hey, I think this-
Yeah, that's what we've seen the last couple of years, we saw some 400,000 dollar grants for certain. Actually, maybe it was just last year, I don't know, that we saw, a couple of years ago, there was zero, virtually.
Okay.
So I, I, you know, it's kind of a crapshoot.
Yeah, sure is.
Do we just flat ask the county commissioners for money?
Well, I think we'll do that too.
FMLD is not a part of the county-
Well, I know, I, I just mean, do we just, above and beyond, just ask the county commissioners-
Sure.
For some money to help us out?
Well, yeah, because that water plant provides a whole lot of water for county residents.
Yeah, exactly. Kind of spin it that way.
Who, uh, who was here during the discussions with the county about contributing to the overpass, which serves large slots of the county?
Yeah, we need to ask them for that, too.
And their utter unwillingness-
Unwillingness to do anything.
To do anything about it whatsoever.
Yeah.
My only caveat to that is, one is vital clean drinking water, and the other is just a drivable surface. So I think that if you could drive home the point that it's water, and not a road, right? That maybe there's something within those guys that would be like, oh, yeah, it's a decent point.
The water is owned by the town and by the county versus, it'd be ours versus, the overpass is actually CDOT's, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's kind of, that might be some of their utter thing of not wanting to do it is, that's CDOT's problem, CDOT should be dealing with that, not us.
Right.
Yeah, but, you know, the way the county keeps issuing more and more building permits, and it, it seems, you know, there's less and less water to go around.
Yeah.
I'm not a prolific watcher of the county's budget, but I believe the commissioners have tried to funnel requests for funding for local projects to either FMLD or to, what's the other program?
Energy Impact?
Yeah, Energy Impact, yep.
It's worth a shot.
It's worth a shot.
Yeah, I just wondered if it's worth a shot, yeah.
In, in person, though, we should probably have them come here.
Yeah.
I think the question on the table right now is-
Oh, yeah.
Which way do we go?
Yeah, I didn't mean to get sidetracked, I just-
Why don't you for the larger number and go for the FMLD grant?
Ask for a million?
Yeah.
And not, yeah, we were, yeah, I'm good with that, too.
Okay.
So we're going for three now, not four?
Yeah, I think so.
In the worst case scenario, if they tell us no, we could be like, well, we weren't able to do that, but we're still doing this project, can we use the money towards that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, we got that figured out for the second time now?
We do.
Okay.
Third time's the charm.
Third time's the charm.
Yeah, if it comes back around, we can talk about it.
Talk about it again, yeah.
Duberry contract, you'll recall that in our, we were in a, kind of a big, we were in a hurry to get our grant application prepared by mid-January, and so we, I came to you and said, you know, we need, if, if we're gonna make this deadline, we need to do it pretty quick. And so we, it was a pretty quick negotiation with Duberry, and we signed them up, and we haven't really looked back. We, we have been, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong about how I say this, but sort of directed, told, advised that we weren't gonna make that January, mid-January application, so we pushed it now back to June. There was a clause in the contract that allowed kind of an off-ramp for either party on 30 days' notice, and we sort of drove that into the, into that agreement because we recognized that we did not go through the request for qualifications that we would have done had we had a lot more time. So I wanted to make sure, I didn't want to just let this time pass without reminding you, letting you know that that was out there in case you wanted to have a conversation about it. And just so you know, we do have an executive session scheduled at the end of the meeting to talk about specific contract language, if, you know, if you want to get into that. I don't know how much of a conversation we really need to have, except that Duberry is fully up to speed on the project, they're working hard to, you know, and, and they were here at 4 o'clock, meeting with Trey and Tony on, you know, technical issues, which I was just a fly on the wall and didn't understand a thing, but it's something I wanted to at least just touch base with you on. And I, but I, and, and Michael wrote a memo in here, and I did as well, which basically say that the staff recommends that we continue to work with Duberry because we have, and we have an application on June 1st that we would like to make. And I can tell you that if we changed horses in the middle of the stream now, we wouldn't make that, but we could make January of '24, if we, if we chose to do that. I noted in here that we have paid Duberry $80,000 to date. I think that was mostly on the, the study that they did. And then I said in here that we'd owe about 15% of the 18, 1.8 million dollar contract. But I can tell you, after checking that again, it's quite a bit more than that because of the phasing. So we're probably into six or so, 100,000 that we owe them, or will owe them after you get through 30%. Does that sound about right?
So we're about a third of the way through that contract agreement, is what it sounds like?
Yeah, we've done all the preliminary work.
Yeah.
All the site investigation and stuff, all the, it's like you have to dye your eyes and polish your teeth to get together to make sure anything's not gonna fall away. Start some preliminary, details stuff with Trey.
And that was in our amendment, the contract amendment that we passed in November.
So a question, if we say we don't terminate the contract now, is there another time we can, or are we stuck that we can't terminate?
30-day notice?
The 30 days is in that amendment. The thirty days is in that amendment.
So, okay, I just want to make clear, so, okay.
But if we're already in it for six hundred grand.
I know, I know, I'm just wondering if there's another time.
Here's Mike, here's a question that I have, um, that, there, I think the, the discussion of that is really important because generally when we have large-scale projects like this, we're able to send that out to different contractors or engineers and really have like a comparative study to decide where the best value is for the town, so because of that time constraint, we didn't really have that option, or we decided not to go that route, you know, and give this contract to Dewberry, so one of the questions I guess I've always had is, you know, SGM did that, uh, report in two thousand and ten, you know, and gave us some recommendations on, um, the current water plant, and I believe that those are the guys that engineered our wastewater plant. So, it would have been nice to engage SGM or a local engineering company that also had some familiarity with our water treatment plant, you know, as, as a comparison, so we're still going through this entire process with these very large numbers with absolutely nothing to compare it to. Not even another opinion, you know, so, um, did you guys read that two thousand and ten report from SGM? Right, and, you know, their recommendations, I, I wasn't around in two thousand and ten, so I don't know whatever happened with any of those recommendations, but the, that, that's basically it, is basically the option of having a, a local engineering firm that knows the area possibly come in and look at this project in a different way versus the path that we're on now. We went from having to hit a January deadline to now that deadline's moved to June. The deadline's gonna be, the we're, we're not that time restrained, in my opinion. Our water plant's working, we're on a twenty-year growth plan. Well, like, we're trying to meet these twenty-year numbers, and the thing's gonna be out of date in twenty years anyway, the new ones, so in my mind, the, the, the time-sensitive nature of now, now, now isn't quite that sensitive. You got, I mean, feel free to pop in here, anybody, and tell me that I'm wrong, but or give me your opinion on that, I just what do you guys think about that?
No, he has a valid point, yeah, I mean, you know, but in two thousand and ten, you know, all those recommendations, the board at the time said no.
They did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. You remember?
That's before me, so.
Yeah, and I'm not blaming anybody, I just that was, that was, and thank you Trey for giving us that information. I thought that there was like more good information there, you know, I don't know what that other town was suing that other company for, and I don't know if it was bad advertising, if it was misrepresented, I don't know if we were able to get any more information about that. I don't, you guys are in the industry, I don't know if you know anything about that company and how it was bought out, and any other lawsuits that were brought against them from municipalities that bought their products and installed them. And neither didn't get the stated filtering capacity, lifespan, et cetera, support after the fact, et cetera, so.
Operational and equipment issues within months of operation due in part to failures by the equipment manufacturer, mainly the membranes. And this city had to actually shut down the whole treatment facility in nineteen, in, uh, twenty fourteen and go back to their old plant that was still standing.
No kidding?
Yes.
Because?
Because the plant they put in that is like ours completely, pretty much completely failed on.
Jesus. Okay.
What's the downside of doing an RFQ? I, I agree with you. It, it, the point is not about malice or bad intentions, but to validate the information presented. Haven't had an opportunity to do it, either in terms of scope or cost.
Yeah.
Why would we not do an RFQ? What, what's the cost, literally and figuratively, doing it? They're already under contract, so they can continue doing their work while that RFQ process with other vendors, for lack of a better term, is happening.
And I, I think I mentioned to you, all of you, in, in writing, that we did have a, a company that's being paid for by DOLA.
DOLA, yeah.
To come in and do just that. We're meeting with them on February first. So, we are gonna get, um, that second opinion.
But an RFQ could be five more opinions.
Okay, so
I don't know if there's five opinions in there.
It's going to be five people saying, we can do this work for you.
Right, right.
They're not going to
They can't tell you costs, they can't give us the work.
They are not gonna go through and analyze your water treatment plan.
Yeah.
They're gonna say, we would be happy for you to pay us to do that, and what is the risk? The risk is, you know, let's say another engineering company, HDR, or somebody, you go out, you do a, a, an RFQ, HDR comes in and they win the uh, the beauty contest, and you hire them. At that point, you will have spent six to eight hundred thousand dollars with Dewberry doing all this engineering analysis, and HDR is gonna say, for liability reasons, we can't use a nickel
Right.
of the material that you spent, uh, money paying Dewberry for, they're gonna throw it out the window, and you're gonna pay for it a second time. And that RFQ process and getting somebody onboarded and educated about your plant and about the water issues in the middle of Colorado in general, it's gonna take four to six months. So, I, I, I mean, there are ways to get at what Kyle is saying, which is, we wanna have an outside set of eyes, make sure we're proceeding in the way that is of the best interest for Silt and its citizens. But doing an RFQ doesn't, it doesn't get you anything. I don't think.
I don't think we're gonna save anything by doing an RFQ for someone else to design a water plant. I think we need to, at the end, when it is designed, and we're looking for the contractor that's going to do it, at that point, we have an outside source review the plan.
Okay. That then gets into the questions of the CMAR.
Right, yeah.
And whether you're going to utilize that process or go through a traditional, uh, design and then bid process. And if you do the traditional process, the contractors are going to simply look at the plans that, let's say, Dewberry prepares. They will take at face value the design that, that they come up with, and they will then bid out what it's gonna cost to build what Dewberry has, has come up with. The CMAR process gets a, a real-life contractor involved earlier in the process, and it allows the contractor who has real-world experience building plants in Nywhot and, I don't know, Cheyenne and other places around the west, involved in working with your design team at the beginning to try and provide that real-world construction advice as to things that can be done that will result in a better project and in a lower-cost project. If you go down the CMAR path, you will have locked in at that point both the design contractor and the construction contractor. There won't be
Bid process at the
There won't be a bid process, and there won't be a review process at the end of that. Because you would be throwing the money you had spent on both the design engineer and the contractor, you're gonna be paying the contractor to work with the design company. You, if, if, if the outside party review came back and said, this is crazy, I mean, I guess that would be important to know, but you don't get anything back at that point.
Well, besides the contractor and the engineers, you also have staff involved in those conversations, you know, we were, I, I mentioned that in the memo, that, that I think that helps everybody's, kind of stay honest, and everybody questions everybody else's conclusions, and I mean, I heard it today, they're in here talking about who knows what, but, you know, they're having, you know, conversations about the best, making sure they employ the best processes for the, you know, least amount of money.
Okay, yeah.
I will add, in the CMAR process, you can also write within the contract that they can only self-reform so much, and they would have to solicit bids, including themselves, for that work, so if you want to say concrete work, they could send the bids to Trey, Jeff, whomever
Yeah.
to solicit bids. On the projects I've done with the CMAR, like on the contractor, they were hired, but they were the only ones who were given the schedule.
Yeah, would, so, in that scenario, like that CMAR, are there, like, local contract companies or CMAR contractors here? There's, that we would hire, I, I would hate, and the reason I ask that is I would hate to do this big of a project and not even use any sort of local contractor.
A local contractor that's probably big enough to do a project to this scope.
There's not.
From start to finish.
Right, now, in your example, you know, that CMAR, that team could send those smaller projects out to like a local bids, like you said, the, the concrete, flat work, dirt work, building, right? More on like a piecemeal.
I mean, HVAC or concrete work. Most of them will self-reform piping, cause it's two specialties, but
Yeah. I would be really interested, not to get away in the way, I'll just make this one point, is like, if you, if we ever got to that point, you know, we had that CMAR that was kind of overseeing that, and then they start putting these out to bids, I would really be interested to know if on like a large HVAC pro, whatever, if it was cheaper, you know, for an outfit, say, out of Denver to come over and do that project than just like a local contractor here, you know what I mean? Because, again, you'd want to show support to the local contractors that do this type of work, because most of them are, are friends and our neighbors, you know, versus bringing in all of these outside vendors to do this work for us, so, just a point that I'm making, just note, so.
Tony, you have any observations about that? I mean, you've been around.
I think the other part of the CMAR process is, is to work towards the GMP, so that you can actually get the fixed cost that goes into the loan application. And so, getting the CMAR onboard and getting to the thirty percent and sixty percent design drawings, so that they can refine the twenty-eight million dollar number to whatever it actually needs to be, is one of the other major processes of the whole CMAR. So, that you guys can then have a number that you can work with, and they've kind of missed that point.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, okay.
And so, that was one of the reasons that, uh, the state revolving funds had basically like pulled back in terms of, we weren't going to have that refined GMP by the January deadline, and we really needed until June, and so it was their direction to basically come back in June, with the CMAR onboard and further design drawings, at that level of detail, to be able to lock in those prices.
Can I just ask, like, a really, just general, like, so why can we not do that phloculation tank now? Like, the two thousand and ten proposal from SGM to support, like, why can't we just do that now? For the next ten years?
For starters, we would have to add additional membranes, which that report also references adding a whole another skid and a whole another building.
Okay.
And so, we are essentially doing that with, by adding the new pretreatment that they're basically proposing, and it's the same as what SGM was proposing.
Yeah, so I didn't get the, I don't have the whole study, so what I see here is SGM Engineering did a study on the water plant two thousand and ten, in the study, it was pointed out that more pretreatment was needed, along with a method to deal with iron and magnesium. They proposed a phloculation tank ahead of the plate settler to help with the turbidity, as well as adding potassium, perm, pardon, I don't know what that is, pre-phloculation tank to, to allow the magnesium and the iron to oxidize, oxidize out, so that's, so ahead, that's not the current plate settler, that's an additional plate settler that would need to be installed, per that report?
Correct, two, two. And this chemical system in front of it that helps the whole system work better.
Right.
And so, in addition to that, like, uh, the SGM plant originally designed it at the one MGD, the point five first skid.
Yeah.
And we know that, that, that didn't happen with the US filter issue.
Right.
In addition to it, it said that, like, as soon as you grew into the capacity that you are at right now, you would need additional building and skids.
Okay.
It's three, four, maybe even five skids.
That was part of that two thousand and ten study, you said, right, yeah, okay.
The time, the place we're at now, I think it said we need four, potentially a fifth, if I was to hold up.
That's correct.
Okay.
And so, it, we've grown into the capacity, the maximum capacity of that plant right now in terms of, and we haven't expanded any further.
Yeah.
And in addition, the state has refined their approval process, in that previously, they would have rated that at one MGD, and it's only rated at point five MGD now. Because it requires redundancy in the filters.
Okay.
And adding more skids is just adding, if we're adding additional of what we already have, we're just I mean, it's already hard to get parts for what we have, so you're trying to find more parts for stuff that we can't find, so it'd be difficult to do.
So, if we did change skids, we would go to a pressurized skid instead of gravity skids.
Okay.
And the plan was to go in that direction, but at that point, we're, we're still stuck with two old skids.
Okay.
And we're adding more parts and pieces to this that we're gonna continue pouring money into.
Yeah, but maybe not twenty-eight million dollars, I knew it. Maybe it's a lot less than that.
No, I, I just don't think the membrane filters are the way to go.
Well, I mean, I, I tend to agree, but, um, I don't know.
Is the idea an interim Band-Aid type of affix that buys us a larger window before we have to think about investing what at the time will be thirty-two million dollars?
I don't even know, because, like, I was reading the report, and, like, we're designing this thing to go to like what we project our population to be in two thousand and forty. So, in twenty years. And then, in twenty years, whatever plant we put in there is gonna be outdated anyway, so we're gonna have to do this again. But we're, but we're all, but our two thousand and forty estimated population is still less than eight thousand people. You know what I mean? So, we're looking at spending all of this money to support our growth for the next twenty years, which is not even double where we're at right now, growth-wise, so yeah, I was thinking, I, I read that, and I was looking at the numbers, and I thought, well, I mean, if we could buy ourselves another eight to ten years, you know, we could, I don't know, we could plan, like, not in such a tight timeline that we're looking at here, you know what I mean, and really make sure that we cover all of our bases before we ever get to that point, I'm just think, that, that's what I was thinking. Now, that might all change, I'm gonna go, I'm going to the water plant on Wednesday to do a new, another tour of it, but, um
You are?
What? Yeah.
Oh, I didn't get your RSVP yet.
I just did.
What time are you going?
One o'clock.
It's already full, sorry.
One o'clock.
Okay, FYI, FYI, we already have one other board member going at one, so no other board members can go at one o'clock.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So, there's just two of ya.
See you over there, okay. Okay, so, um
I've seen the conspiracy.
So, just real quick, to that point.
Do you understand my point?
I get your point, but we've discussed it before, that the equipment for this process is around eight million dollars.
Correct, everything else is the infrastructure that goes around it.
Whether we, I mean, if we designed a plant that's gonna sustain ten thousand in the population, to stretch that twenty years out, the cost isn't gonna exponentially go up. It's gonna be another skid, maybe some larger pretreatment, so maybe we're looking at ten million in equipment, it's still gonna be twenty million in concrete, dirt, and buildings.
Yeah, alright, so maybe we did discuss that, and I'm just maybe, maybe you brought that point up, is phasing this thing in smaller set, chunks, or however you want to describe it, to where oh, I don't know, like, the initial infrastructure is just less with the ability to add on to that in five, ten, fifteen years, to where right now, we build a building and a plant that can sustain our five-year growth with redundancy, and then we have a plan in another eight to ten years to add on to that, and then we have a plan in fifteen to eighteen years to add on to that kind of deal, to make that initial investment or cost just less substantial. Is that a possibility?
I was just gonna add, I also think the idea of a regional approach, the idea that a bunch of tiny towns six or eight miles apart are each spending thirty million dollars on a water plant and putting it on the backs of the residents to try and pay for it, it just doesn't make sense. Why would we not solve it regionally, and even if it, I'm not saying it's easy, I'm not saying it's quick, but your, your point is, is in regards to that. It gives us that window of opportunity to start having those discussions throughout the region and saying, how are you guys gonna come up with thirty billion? How are you gonna?
We only have one town that we need to Well, we have one town that we need, that we can do it with, and that's Newcastle.
Newcastle.
Cause rifles are.
Relatively.
Rifle has a brand new plant.
Yeah, rifle's a brand new plant, and they're more than happy to sell us the water.
At the same cost as us building our own.
I think there are ways to discuss all of those aspects, and I don't wanna get it too far into the weeds, but to the larger point that, that Kyle was making, an interim Band-Aid, for lack of a better term, or a temporary fix, gives us an opportunity to have those discussions.
Yeah.
And make a more longer-term, potentially cost-effective approach that doesn't hinder our existing citizens from prospective growth.
Right.
It's not definitive, it's not definitely gonna happen.
So you guys, just like, from the engineering standpoint, so if you take out the concern of redundancy in the system, so like, we just, let's say we don't have to worry about one of those skids from going down and, and not producing the maximum amount of clean water that that plant, okay? So, this is a, at, at what point, like, how many years of our projected growth? Like, where's the intersection of, "We can't produce enough water for the town"? What year is, what, what year is that?
So, are we talking with the proposed?
No, cur- currently, right now, but we gotta take out the redundancy, because I understand the importance of that.
If we knocked off one of the trains right now, the town would struggle to produce their average.
Say that one more time, if what?
If we knocked off one of the trains right now?
No, 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 I'm not talking about that. I'm talking if we're, if we're producing water with that plant fully functional, not knocking off one of the trains, because that's the redundancy aspect of it, so I'm asking you to get rid of the redundancy part, right? What year, with our projected growth, and then you look at the number for our peak daily use on average in the summer, with our four water tanks that we have and our distribution system, at what point are we, like, "Oh, all right, we can't produce enough water on a daily basis for this town"?
Can I interrupt before he answers and ask him to move the, to the table that has a microphone, so I can hear?
And you may not have that, that's a really, I think, in-depth question, but.
So, I'm gonna go off of memory of that, one of the slides we had.
Right.
And I think your peak day demand right now is about half an MGD.
Point four eight.
Yeah, okay. And the most production we can expect to really get out of those skids is somewhere around point-six MGD if they operate it around the clock twenty-four hours. The plant right now typically runs eighteen hours.
Right.
So that's a, if I'm doing the math correctly, that ends up right around point-five MGD, so it's pretty close in the summer.
Pretty close.
Like.
But that would be if every day was at peak demand.
Right.
That's still, that's our peak-peak. I don't know what our average summer demand is.
Your average day demand is about point-three MGD.
Point, yeah, point-three-three, yeah.
So, with one skid out of service, you can't meet that. So if one skid were to fail, you could not do that at the moment.
Right, right. That's the redundancy part that we're talking about, right? Okay.
Yeah, so that, and I, I wanna come back to one other thing you asked, I thought it was a great question.
Yeah.
About trying to scale the size of equipment, which is a, a great concept. But when we looked at taking, so right now, we preliminary, we're looking at doing one MGD trains, doing two now. So one would be redundant, so you could meet your average day demand now and in the future. We looked at going to like a, a three-quarters of an MGD, and the price reduction is like ten percent.
Okay.
It, it, you're at the bottom end of the cost curve in this size facility, if that makes sense.
And, and it's important for the board to consider, so a lot of municipalities, when they have a capacity treatment issue with their water treatment plant, have a lot of flexibility to, in the summer, when peak demands are being hit, to lower that peak demand, they put everybody on every other day or every third day or they completely eliminate irrigation. Eighty, Trey, I don't know, I'm throw, I'm throwing out a number, eighty-plus percent of the town's outdoor irrigation is done by the raw water irrigation system.
Yeah.
You do not have a lot of irrigation that comes off your treated water system, meaning if you have a, a lack of capacity available at any given time, you can't fix it by simply telling people not to water their lawns.
Yeah, sure, that makes sense. You lose a little bit of that flexibility with providing that.
Pat, maybe you just talk briefly about the state's response to redundancy and, because I think that may have an impact on this conversation.
Yes, and Tony can back me up too on this redundancy issue. So, the state likes to, um, likes to ensure that when you have, they call it N minus one, or the number of trains you have minus one, in this case, it'll be one. They like to ensure when you have just your N minus one trains operating, that you can meet your average day demand. You cannot currently.
Right.
So, um, going forward, that's why we looked at doing one MGD, because we could meet it now and we can meet it in the future. So you could meet it with a full redundant train.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's a state requirement, or is that just, like you said, what the state, like, likes to see?
It's a state. It, no, I'd have to go back and verify the design criteria, because I, but the design criteria, I cannot remember the way the current one is written, but I believe it is written, you have to be able to do it, and I'd have to confirm that to verify it.
Right. On the new plant?
Yeah.
I meant right now, with our current plant.
On your current plant, you cannot meet your average day demand with one train out of service in this state.
No, I know that, okay.
State frowns on that.
I'm sure they do.
Yeah.
I, I think what I was.
I mean, we, we would too, of course, but gotta ask all the questions, I suppose.
Oh, yeah.
What I was getting at was that, you know, you guys were talking about a Band-Aid approach. If the Band-Aid approach doesn't meet those guidelines, then they won't certify the plan.
Right.
And you won't get the money.
Sure.
It's the state that gives you the loan.
And fair, fair point to the, uh, the SRF program makes you look at a twenty-year plan for accommodating everything.
Right.
So, um, we would probably have a hard time trying to cut that back and trying to justify not doing that while seeking money from the SRF program or, and bill funding. And the bill funding is the, the program that provides the, um.
Loan forgiveness.
Thank you, principal forgiveness.
Oh, gotcha, that makes sense, okay. And then, may, maybe a little bit aside from the actual, like, specifics of water, Jeff. Sorry, this will be, this will be for you, and then, and then you guys, again, tell me what you think about this. But I think that in this, like, where we're at in this process right now, I really think that we need Michael Mann or whoever else, financial-wise, to come in and build this thing backwards for us. And here's what I mean by that, it's like, we get a chart of what our current water user rates are, right? So, basic rate, tier-one, tier-two, tier-three, depending how much water you use, okay? And then we look at the, the little chart that he came up with, like, worst case, we spend this, is what the rate's gonna go. I wanna do it a different way and say, "We think, based on what we've heard, a reasonable increase for somebody's base water rate could be this amount." Based on that, and then where we put these tiers, what are we looking at in terms of a loan? And how close is that to what we need? Because if we come up with an idea that we think that, all right, like, we can increase it by this and, because we need clean water, right, et cetera, I wanna know how close we are to being able to get this done. Do you guys follow me on that? Does that make sense?
No, I agree, yeah. Yeah, you know, so you're saying, you know, keep it under a hundred bucks in increase, something like that.
It's kinda like going to your mortgage broker and being like, "I can spend this, tell me how much else I can buy."
The last C-MAR job, big C-MAR job I was on, that was the intent, and that's why it was a C-MAR job.
What do you, well, hold on, what do you mean by that? You're talking about, like, from the building cost standpoint of it? Oh, no, no, I know.
No, but that's how it, that's how it.
Got there.
Got there.
Is they said, "We can afford this," and they found a com- company that was willing to do it for that.
Oh, okay, that, okay.
No, no, I wanna, I wanna clarify, they, they figured out a rate, scaled it up to what the loan could be, and the C-MAR was, that was the cost we met.
Met.
Okay, so maybe we were close to getting there in this process anyhow, but I just think that that's a reasonable place to where we are, right? Do you think?
Yeah. What was the last number you guys figured out?
Twenty-eight-four.
Well, I mean, uh, monthly increase.
Oh.
Because it, it went down a couple of times, from like one-sixty to like one-ten and.
One-sixty-eight is what we had initially.
Yeah.
And I, I, I don't wanna say, 'cause I.
Yeah, and I, I, I thought you.
I can't remember exactly what it was.
It went down into the one-thirty, one-forty range or something like that.
Yeah, it went down.
We don't know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do like that approach, at least while they continue doing their process, we look at that number.
I mean, it's really time.
It gives us a point to.
Yeah, yeah.
To aim for to meet, so.
Yeah, so, they're here and we're here, right, so like, how do we get you guys to get here?
Yeah.
We come here, so, really, I mean, that's what it's gonna be.
Well, that's when we get the, uh, the C-MAR, when we can discuss building type, and like, I, I can get a steel building for a hundred fifty thousand dollars that meets all the building code criteria, or I can build a masonry building for a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So you're, you're further along in your thinking right there than what I'm thinking, right?
Well, I'm just pulling that as an example.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's an easy one that everybody can tangibly.
Yeah, you're, you're talking about, like, the cost savings of the project itself, which I understand where that's at. Like, I'm talking about our discussion as a board, a- as it relates to the citizens of this, of the town, where we're at with this baseline rate increase and what we feel can be acceptable and what we feel is totally not acceptable.
I, I see what you're saying, and I, I, what I, I was, I was going one step further.
Yeah, right.
The contractors, they're going, "Oh, okay, I see where the board is at. What can we do to bring those numbers in alignment?"
Yeah, yeah.
Because they have the real-time cost data.
But it, but at that point, at your point, we would've already hired the C-MAR and then you guys are doing the design already. So like, we would've, at your point, we've already decided we're doing this. We need this information before we say we're doing this, okay?
Fair point, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, if we can get it, you know, double digits instead of triple digits.
You know it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, we do have our normal meeting at seven, so.
I do wanna make one point, we are, we're, we're in design now, though.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, I.
I just wanna make sure that you know that, I mean.
We're thirty percent there, aren't we?
Not quite, but we're moving in that direction.
Yeah, yeah, I know what you meant. I think maybe, and if I was right, his, his example, though, is like, we've already got a C-MAR onboard, which means this project's moving forward and we've.
No.
So before we get there.
Well, we're, we're in the process of advertising for a C-MAR here pretty quick. I mean, we've got the, the RFQ written.
Okay.
And I think we, where are we with that, Pat?
So, we have to sit down and get confirm, confirmation from the state that they agree we put all the right specifications in there. And I called Sean today, haven't heard back. But, um, to receive the most benefits from the C-MAR, you wanna bring them in as early as possible, because that's where we have the biggest implications on.
Christ.
Because we're all concerned.
Right.
The, I would love it if they came and said, "Fifteen million, check done," I would.
Right.
I'd do a lot of that for the case, but.
We, we are all concerned, but with all due respect, we are more concerned about the cost than you are. That's just, that's just flat out how it is, and, sorry about that, but that's, that's how it's gonna go. Just, and just to be clear, that, like, the C-MAR onboard doesn't happen until we say we're doing this project, correct? That's right?
At some point, we will make that negotiation.
So I would just, I just think that we need some of those financial numbers before we get to that point.
But, don't, don't you need it much sooner? I mean, if.
Well, yeah.
If you're, if your goal is to tell the C-MAR and the design professionals, "This is the dollar val- value that we want you to, to, to try and design and construct around," seems to me they need that pretty quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we don't.
That's gonna require this body to identify a target rate that Jim Mann can then reverse engineer into what the, the financing on the loan looks like.
Oh, yeah, exactly, that was my point, yeah, so, soon.
So I think if we, we're not there yet, but agenda changes.
We can add that in.
We can have a discussion on that.
A discussion.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Since we have a few people here, we'll go ahead and get this meeting started, so we can move through this. So, uh, the time's now seven oh five PM, and I will, uh, start the meeting, uh, maybe have roll call.